Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we have our open study session with GFL Green for Life. Some residents had some concerns and questions, so I decided to put the mayor to have this meeting tonight. Who would like to begin? Have you heard any of the concerns or questions from residents? You might want to come up and introduce yourself.
Hello. Sam Caremagna with GFL General Manager. Mary Jo Van Ader, Municipal Sales Rep. I've got Coleen here, who's our Residential Manager, and Tony, who is your Route Manager on the streets for the city of Dearborn Heights on a five-days-a-week schedule. So, I guess to answer your question, we do see the complaints or the issues that come around through your call center that come into us, as well as our call center that come in. They get emailed out every day. I'm on the distribution lists. I think I'm seeing them all. And they go to Tony, who is on the street all day in his pickup truck and addressing the concerns. We've seen some missed pickups, of course. We've seen some Christmas tree things as of late. You know, following Christmas, you normally see those kind of things. We've seen some things where people are putting cement in the cans and building a house and spreading it over four or five houses. So, there's a variety of issues out there. But Tony looks at them every day and reports back, responds back that what the situation or circumstance was.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes, thank you. This is going to be for our DPW Director, because at one time, and I think going to the contract directly, hopefully everybody has a copy, page 11, under Section E, the consequences for failure to provide certain service levels. So, we just directly work within the contract. I think that would be wise. Now, one time, because per contract, through GFL, we had a service center that we were calling. But then that changed when you came onboard. We were contacting DPW directly now. So, you're charting all of the complaints that residents have, correct?
Yeah, through an email. There's a paper trail on that.
So, when those come in, you two should be communicating daily, correct? Because that's part of the contract as well. So, you're communicating with DPW daily?
John and I speak as needed. Tony communicates with your DPW daily.
So, my question is for you, what are we getting as far as missed complaints from residents on a daily basis? Because when we look at this, if you look under Section E, item number two, under Section A, a complaint of failure to make collection from a residence, and again, not being remedied, are we keeping track of being remedied? Within 24 hours, the city shall deduct a sum, and I've asked this before, by the way, of $25. This is what I want to know, because we should be tracking that, right? And so, that's my question to you. And how is that looking? And what are we doing to track that?
So, I mean, it's not actually a tracking system. It's an email paper trail. So, I don't follow every email that's on the DPW website, to be quite honest with you. At some days, there could be 500 emails on there, not all garbage-related, but many, many other things. But typically, the next morning when I come in, GFL has responded with a comment that it's picked up, or whatever the other issue is. You know, maybe the resident was less than honest about something or what happened. But from what I see, I don't hardly see very many that take a second request to get something done. The one thing I will say that does take a second request sometimes, which personally I think GFL could do a little better job, is the cart repairs. That seems to be something that lingers. As far as getting the trash picked up within the 24 hours, I don't see that as a big problem. More the cart issue of it needs a wheel, it needs a lid, that type of thing. And I don't know, I mean, I just recently got a copy of this contract and breathed through it, so I don't know the specifics on the carts, other than that they've been replacing them and repairing them as needed. So, that's an observation that I would provide to you.
So, you would say, just to resummarize, when the call comes into your department, you're communicating with GFL via email correspondence. That trash that's missed is getting picked up within that 24-hour period, correct?
Yep, to the best of my knowledge. So, we have two secretaries there. They will actually email the route supervisor directly, and then they also offer the resident the GFL call center number if they care to make a complaint there also.
Okay, thank you.
But it's much more streamlined when our secretaries send it directly to their supervisor, because it doesn't get lost anywhere, right? I mean, it's direct.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilwoman Bazey?
Okay, so, I got, I guess, a question and a comment. The first question, I mean, the question is, do you guys have a checklist? So, all of us are getting pretty much the same emails from residents, missed pickup, obviously, what councilwoman just mentioned. Do you guys have a checklist from your drivers that can say, I mean, let's say you go down Fenton, okay, from Ford Road to, you know, whatever, you know, if the driver has that road, that they can put a check mark? Okay, I did this route, so there's quality control, that somebody can go back to see if all the streets have been covered? Because it's like, every week, we're getting the same emails, sometimes by same residents, that they're not getting their trash picked up. So, the first, that question is, do you guys have a checklist? If not, you know, what are you guys are doing to make sure that the trash is picked up weekly?
We do have a, we don't necessarily have a checklist, but we have a GPS tracking device on all the trucks. Now, that is, that is a good thing to have. We can see any truck anytime, whether it's in the collection area or back at the yard. We can see that all the time. That contributes to some problems once in a while, because it'll, just because a truck went down a street, doesn't necessarily mean that it was picked up. So, that sometimes creates a bit of a problem. But that's some of the problem you might see once in a while, when we're looking at the tablet on the screen and see the truck go up and down, doesn't necessarily mean they picked things up. So, to answer your question, yes, we can track them. Yes, Tony is on the street. He goes out on the road about 8:00 in the morning after he's done with his paperwork, and he's out there till 4:00 or 5:00 every day until the routes are done, and goes up and down the streets. So, that's our process.
And also, our process is, if John Selby calls with a complaint or a missed stop, it goes directly to him. All right? So, the day is not done, and sometimes he'll swing around. Is that right?
Absolutely.
He swings around, and we'll get that missed stop. Now, do you understand, and I'm being very open about this, not all stops are missed. Some are late sets. And people say, oh, I didn't, you know, they slept in, they were out the night before, they didn't get it out. And so, we get that, not just with your community. We serve 70 communities in the metro Detroit area. So, we're used to maybe, and we, and we'll come back and get it, okay? So, sometimes that can be a chronic issue that should be addressed as well.
We do respond to every email, every complaint, what you'll find. And if the response isn't as thorough as it should be, we can work on that. But let's just say, maybe a recycle, a street was reported as missed, and we go back for it, we'll find many, many times, one stop that's out there that might have got missed or was late. So, it might be reported as the whole street was missed.
Right.
One customer out on that street that was missed. And oftentimes, hey, let's face it, if you're picking up a street, there's 40 houses on it. To miss one customer, to drive by one-
In the middle, does it, I mean, you know, so you have to consider that sometimes when you get these complaints.
We are far from perfect, but we're always working to be better.
Okay, so, I guess, my comment, or maybe a question, is why is that? Like, all of a sudden, now, our streets are dirtier from garbage, you know, not being, all of it being dumped in the truck, and some of it end up on the street. I've driven to a lot of streets when I get calls, and there's a lot of garbage that actually, I mean, I understand if, you know, you might have one or two, but if there's multiple houses on one street that have trash where their garbage can needs to be, or where it was placed, because the truck is not putting all the garbage in the truck.
We have found, we found a couple of things there. Recently, we've had some very, very windy days in the last, in the last month. But we also found that we have, we had a truck in the area, when, it's a front-load truck, so when the bucket goes over the top, there was a, and you can't see this unless you get on top of the truck and look, and I mean, on top of the truck. There's a guard, there's a shield there with, we call it whiskers. It's like a broom, like a broom up there. And so, that blocks any garbage or recyclables from coming out when you dump the bucket. You dump the bucket in, and if that brush is not there, and we found a truck out there in the collection fleet, that the brush somehow came up missing, must have fell in the truck and disappeared. So, we've since ordered that and fixed that problem. But we found that that truck was creating problems. We've since fixed that problem on that truck. Now, if there's others recently, then we can address those.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, just, so, I mean, with that, on that note, you know, so if you have somebody driving after the trucks, I think that's one of the things they should look at. I mean, if there's excessive garbage on the street, obviously, you know, it was dumped.
I'll ask Tony, you want to come speak there?
I just wanted to make a comment. All trash needs to be bagged.
Pardon?
All trash needs to be bagged.
Even recyclable?
Not the recycling, talking about trash. Trash can't be just thrown in, because think about it, when it goes up and into the truck with the carrot truck, like you're saying, it's going to fly. I mean, there's, it's a little bit, it will come out, right? Is that true?
It is, but those problems, the problem that I talked to you about prevents a lot of that. We found that problem with the truck. Tony can speak to it. He's on the street in a pickup truck every day, up and down the street. So, when he's seeing these things, he could tell you some of his most recent experiences. Go ahead, Tony.
Okay. I've been out here for three months now. I took over for the other route supervisor named John Cole. And one of the things that I do realize is, a lot of the garbage cans, if they're overfilled and the garbage is not embagged, when that carrot grabbed that container to dump it, if there's loose garbage in there, it's not all going to go directly into there. So, that's what she was speaking on, on the trash, it should be bagged. Recycle's a little different because of the way the truck is made. So, they got a chute that it slides down in there, so you ain't going to get that problem. But sometimes you get a lot of loose garbage, they sit them on the side of the bins, and when they pick it up, that's why, especially on windy days. And I do go around behind some of these trucks and try to clean up behind these trucks. The one truck that we had the problem with, we got that resolved. The unit number was 624. Somebody, a resident probably can tell you that. I know one lady particularly knows that number by heart in Monday section. So, we got that problem resolved. We have another truck out there with the same issue, but the driver not know how to operate it, so that don't happen. So, but we're definitely aware of those situations and trying to get those resolved.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Muscat?
I got more of a comment than questions. And number one, I've had a pretty good working relationship with Tony now for about three months, and every time I've called, he's been Johnny-on-the-spot, picking up whatever issues we had. And before him, Sam.
I'm Sam.
Yeah, we called you, and you got it done.
Right.
In the past. But the complaints are missed, drivers not putting the cans back where they find them, or drivers picking up the cans and driving as they're dumping, and then putting them further away for somebody's-
Senior citizens.
-senior citizens, where, you know, they're a little bit older, and they, you know, got to go chase their garbage cans down. And I do know that when we had our study sessions, when we were deciding of which company to pick, we were told we were getting new trucks. Never, I'll never forget it. We were told we were getting new trucks for Dearborn Heights. Matter of fact, that came from the owner of GFL, right, standing right there.
Patrick.
And, yeah, Patrick.
Patrick out of Canada.
And there were some new trucks, but there was some, still some of the older ones going around. But the other thing I want to say, and I promised Tony I would say this, a lot of the issues have come from people not moving their cars off the street. You can't pick up garbage when a car is in front of the trash can. And we need to have that enforced 100%. If after that, and trash is missed, then I can say it's their fault. But right now, I can't, I can't say that, because I see cars parked all over the city on trash pickup days. And I think with, with what I've said about the driver's part, that is a learning thing, okay? That could be something that's communicated down to the drivers, they must put them back where they belong. And I know we have, our rules are that they must be off the street. Even if somebody puts it on the street, those arms extend far enough where they can put them back on, and they need to put them there. Maybe that'll help us get the message across, that's where they belong.
Thank you.
We can reinforce that message again. Obviously, we're, each truck's picking up 800 homes per day-ish, and we can reinforce that message. It seems that it's always got to be spoken to, to the drivers. It's a constant, a constant message. It has to be relayed back to them. Let me tell you a couple of reasons of why they'll move the cans. It's not always apparent. If the recycle truck comes first, he may get the can and move it a little bit to dump it, and then move it away from the trash can, because if you put them side by side, I'm just, I'm just-
I'm talking about when they do move them 10, 15 feet down the-
Well, yes, exactly. So, sometimes they're side by side, and they move them a little bit for that reason. Other times, that's not always as apparent, is sometimes people put them underneath trees. We can get them. We have to move them sometimes to be able to dump them, to keep them out of the trees. Sometimes, not all the time. But that's something that's not often looked at and saying, hey, you know what? This can was put under a tree. We can't dump it under a tree. We've got to, we've got to move it somewhere. We're, we can improve, and will improve, but that's one of the other things that's not always seen.
I just want to say thank you to Tony, since he's our Route Manager right now. I've talked to him numerous times, and I appreciate you doing what you do. Thank you.
Another thing on the, moving the cans from the concrete to the grass, there's some residents out there that doesn't want you to put their cans on the grass. There's other residents out there that doesn't want them on the side. They would have them by the driveway, but they don't want them in the driveway. So, it's like, I have to relay the message to different drivers and try to remember the areas where they're okay with it on the concrete, and other ones not okay with it.
Well, that's a city issue, because you're supposed to be off the street.
That's accurate.
That's a city issue.
They're supposed to be off the street.
Because we have complaints about the cans damaging their grass, so I don't want the can on my grass, so.
Well, I got pretty nice grass, I think, and my grass hasn't been messed up yet because of the garbage can, so.
But I try to accommodate whatever, you know, the area that I can remember that wants it that way, and there are certain areas, I know what the ordinance is, but, you know, just trying to make people happy at one time, and it's kind of hard.
Councilman Abella?
So, a couple of mine are comments and some are questions. First things first, there was one particular resident, and I don't want to give out too much of the details, but I know all the council members are aware of this one, because we had a bunch of emails on this, where they felt that the truck driver was intentionally missing them. You guys remember the one with the car?
Yeah.
Wouldn't let the car get out, et cetera, et cetera. I don't want to get into the details, because I don't want, you know-
Yeah, we had video.
But I presume something like that, in my book, is definitely not acceptable, and I hope whoever the driver is-
The one else, Cecilia?
No, I don't believe it was Cecilia. I think it was in South Heights, off the top of my head.
It was in the north, but I'm not going to give the name.
Yeah, but the point is, something like that is just not acceptable. I mean, you know, where they have a vendetta, or they have, you know, where it becomes personal, you know, that person cannot be doing that, doing that at that particular home.
Driver's no longer with GFL.
Okay, then that solves that problem. Second thing is, I had it on here, a truck, and I don't know how feasible that is, and I know financially, you know, it's obviously a cost to that, but similar to what, you know, Councilwoman Bazey mentioned, you know, having maybe another truck following these trucks, or at random, kind of like, almost like an audit, randomly go through the streets and follow certain streets, certain trucks, to find out that they're doing their jobs properly. Now, you guys pointed out some things here that honestly, I would have never thought about, you know, where it could have flown off just before you guys got there, and then therefore, it'll make the street dirty. That's possible, but it also could be from the truck drivers. So, maybe some sort of an audit system where, whether it's Tony or whoever it is, following those particular trucks randomly, and then, of course, maybe even grading them, you know-
Hot spots especially.
Yeah.
If you know there's a hotspot in your city, then we need to focus on that area, and that would be a great suggestion, and we thank you for that.
Yeah, just randomly.
Let me-
And, go ahead.
I'll expand on that a little bit. We've got a, late last year, we hired a driver trainer, Ralph, and he's been out doing observations on drivers, looks at them, follows them to the work area, follows them to the landfill or the recycle plant, and he watches their performance. We could focus him in on Dearborn Heights and pay a little closer attention to your drivers here.
I think it'd be a good idea.
And that would, we can utilize him, I can utilize him however and wherever I need, and maybe this is a good spot to put him in now and do observations on all the-
The next item I want to comment on, and I think this is, this is a case where we as residents are at fault. I think a lot of times what happens is, it's much more convenient to get on social media and make comments, and I get that. It's a way for them to vent out, et cetera, et cetera, and then suddenly you have 20, 30, 40 different residents commenting. Obviously, there's something to that. They're not commenting just randomly, they're commenting because there's a problem. But I would suggest, and I know we've suggested it in the past, for the residents to contact DPW instead, instead of just on social media, where you guys don't have access to those particular complaints, is something I would suggest. So, that's just, that's just a comment. The next, just too quickly, I know we have somewhat similar problems with the previous, you know, garbage haulers. So, I think this is somewhat of a, I don't know, maybe an industry thing, who knows? But it has happened in the past. It's not something new to GFL. In my book, GFL's done overall a good job. Are they, are they where they need to be? No. There's still a lot of improvements left to be done, but overall, they've done a good job, especially enough to contact them. And then lastly, I want to give a shout out, I was coming to, I came to tell you guys, I know he's right behind you guys, but Tony's done a great, great job whenever I've contacted him with a resident's complaint, and he's been like, all over it, making sure it's done. In addition to that, contacting me back and letting me know that he took care of it for the residents. So, just wanted to let you guys know that you got a pretty good man over there working for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, I can understand how you said some people put their trash out late. Had you ever thought of possibly going with maybe a GoPro camera, where you can see that they specifically didn't have their can out, so there's no complaint made against the actual driver?
Good idea.
They're not expensive anymore. They're pretty cheap.
We have, we have thought about that in the past, and what, we can do that, but it could turn into a finger-pointing contest, and I'm proving you wrong, you're proving me wrong. I don't know at the end of the day what we really get out of it, but we have, if we have complete, continuous problems, what we do is, we keep, we send an email alert to our supervisors in every city that's there. Okay, Mr. Jones on Smith Street, every week says he's missed. And so, we go out there, we take pictures and apply it to the file and the address. And so, when they call, sometimes we say, listen, we were there at 7:30 in the morning, we got a picture, there's nothing out. So, we do similar things to that.
Absolutely, yeah, because I hate to see the driver take, you know, fault for it when it's really not their fault.
I happened to be in your city one time, and I watched a gentleman, because I was looking at the lids, because I think there was an issue, we wanted the lids closed. So, I was driving down the street, and I saw this guy, he was already done the street, and he's wheeling out his recycling, and I go, oh. He goes, I didn't know there's a time limit on it. You know, I'm saying, and so, that's an example, people don't know, and it's not malicious.
It's been there for years.
They're not being malicious to your residents necessarily, you know what I mean? Well, I'm going to put mine out late, you didn't, no, it's just, they don't know that it has to be out. Some people, they work hard, and they come home, and they don't put it out the night before or what have you. So, you know, but we do our, do our best, and if you do, could get, if you have any cable news network, I know that there's a cable for your, your community, maybe do a brief, like, reminder to your residents, you know, how to place the cart, not to put it under a tree, they need 15 feet to dump, communications, everything. And I think maybe we can help you with that.
That sounds good.
We can provide you the visuals that you need, talk about recycling, I know that's kind of another thing, we'll talk about that. Sam has another meeting he has to go to, but I want to hear, talk to you about recycling today as well.
Let me-
Yeah, because I know, and my personally, my trash day was yesterday, I didn't even put out a can, because I don't fill it very often. And this morning, I had a donut box, a pizza box, water bottle on my front lawn that somehow came out of the truck, you know, and I have no clue where it came from.
That shouldn't be.
I mean, and, and another thing too, I would like to thank Tony, I have spoke with you, and you've always been right there. You've been great. I really appreciate it.
Tony for president.
You probably don't even know I was talking to you, because I don't identify myself.
I remember you.
Okay. I just say, this is Denise.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I might-
Yes, Mayor.
Sam, Mary Jo, please don't remove Tony, and we want advance notice, because as all of us have indicated, and I mean, you really have responded, and I've appreciated as an elected official, when someone's called and there's been a situation. And I know I've seen you go out there and personally pick the stuff up, put it in your pickup truck, and the problem is solved. You're a special guy, and we appreciate you.
Yeah, you are. We can't lose you. I tell you, you are just right on. I've never had anybody respond like you have.
You know, thank you for that. Tony and I have worked together for over 20 years, so it's, it's good to have Tony with us, and you're seeing the reasons why we've brought him into GFL, because of the quality of work that he does, the response. We can't maybe prevent everything, but we certainly can respond to things and close them out properly. And obviously, through the compliments, he's taking care of those things.
Yeah, you can tell, he definitely cares about the residents, definitely. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
The, is a follow-up question regarding the lids, because I know we've all received some calls, and I think, Mary Jo, you had alluded to it at one point, with the lids being left open, because some of our elderly residents have had concerns with that. When it rains, it fills up with water, now they have to dump it, it's heavy. Anyway, I know it sounds trivial and petty, but we can make sure that that's not a problem, leaving them open. Can we make sure they're closed? I know it's, I, it sounds petty, but you try moving them as they fill with water, and try dumping them for our elderly as a challenge.
It's, it's very hard to do. The truck, when it goes up, it dumps them, and when you lower it back down, sometimes they'll close, other times, you get a little gust of wind, they'll, they'll open, sometimes they'll close, sometimes. I will tell you that when they're closed, it makes it awful difficult to tell if the street's been serviced. If every lid was closed, you don't know sometimes if the street's been serviced or not. That goes back to the GPS going, it might show the truck went down, and you're assuming that's true. But if every lid's closed, it's hard to tell. If you have someone that's, that's-
It's really hard on them.
It's a real hardship for them. Send us the address, we can try to make sure that that lid is closed for them. But we have, we have special circumstances, we can try and accommodate some of those things. Since you're on the carts, real quick, let me talk to John, because I do have to, I apologize, about the cart, the cart delivery, the cart repairs. We're still seeing cart wheel damage in town, wheels breaking off the carts. That goes back to an original problem when you purchased the carts from Cascade. We're still correcting and fixing what was a bad batch of carts from them. So, they shipped us plenty of wheels. When, when it gets right down to it, that wheel problem is Cascade cart problem, not necessarily ours. In our contract, it states we fix them, but there was a manufacturer defect there. So, yes, there is some delays in getting those carts fixed, because there's an excessive amount of wheels still coming off of your carts.
Okay, Councilman Abella?
You kind of alluded to this a little bit, Mary, but maybe a community service announcement that we could put on our website, where if the resident is going to put in the complaint on the website, you could have the video right there from you guys instead of from us, because you know a lot more of the rules than we would, or maybe administration might, in putting down, like, you know, some things that you guys have mentioned today, for example, even though, you know, a lot of us have been involved with this, like, I, you know, I
never thought about this, the tree thing, or, you know, whether the height, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe you guys can put together some sort of a, you know, community service video, and then we can add it to our website, the administration can add it to their website, and maybe right there where people can, where people go to complain, and then when they watch that video, it gives them all the instructions, that can hopefully eliminate a lot of the problems. Second question I had for you, do you have one or two people on the trucks?
Well.
Well, the Carrato truck is on the one person on it.
So I was thinking, the one that has two, or if, or if you had to, if it's possible, you could have the one person driving, and then the other person doing the quality control to make sure site-wise, that everything's been taken care of in that particular, you know, before they go to the next house, where maybe the one second person can jump off and make any corrective action that may need to be corrected, just as an option.
Most, most trucks are one-person trucks. There are two-person trucks that we, that we have in the area for ball collection, you know, like televisions and, and chairs and couches and whatnot. They are around, and they run up and down the streets as well as Tony, but I think that for us to, to reemphasize the focus of debris blowing off the trucks or on the street before we get there.
And you may want to mention it in the video.
Yeah.
We will.
Thank you.
I'll work something up for you, and I'll work with our communications department, and I'll get back with whomever. John, sell me.
Yeah, Lee can handle, he's got control over the cable, so we'd like to do a program talking about the location when the carts were to put them in, et cetera.
Okay, Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Dearborn Heights, earliest start time, latest end time, the earliest the carts will be out there are the cars, the trucks will be out there, excuse me, and then somebody's house gets missed, do they call the GFL, do they call DPW?
That's what we communicate in the, I think in the new, we did a newsletter at the onset of our contract, and I think some of those specifics were in there, however, it's like everyone else, they, you just forget the details. So we need to refresh it with another newsletter maybe, or, you know, some type of mailing, whatever, but we can do that for you.
But the.
I'm prepared with you.
Earliest they're gonna be there is 7:00 AM?
Seven, 7:00 AM is about the earliest you should see a truck. By 10:00 o'clock in at our place, check the truck out, leave the yard, get dispatched, about 7:00 AM is the quickest you should see them.
And end time by 5:00?
No.
Seven, seven to seven is in the contract.
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven.
And then if, if. If they are, if they are missed, they have options. They can call GFL to our, to our call center, or in, in most cases, they're calling the, your DPW department, and then that email is generated. That's the quickest, that's the quickest way. It goes direct to Tony.
What is the number for the service center, the GFL service center?
Our service center, we have about 60 reps here.
No, the same phone number.
The phone number. Phone number, it's four, uh, 464.
I got one.
Don't you, Director Sell me, don't you want them calling DPW?
He's leaving?
Yeah, because otherwise, we can't track it.
He wants them calling DPW.
If they go directly to GFL, we don't know about it.
Yeah, they should be calling DPW, not the GFL number.
Most of the callers call the DPW.
Yeah.
We need to clarify that.
And then leaving a message at DPW.
Is that how important this is? He's leaving? In the middle of the meeting?
He's got another meeting.
Oh, yeah. Okay, he's got another meeting. Wow, okay. See ya. That's ridiculous.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel?
It's in my brief.
Would you, did you have a question?
Well, I had, I got contacted by several residents, and one, and, and Sam just dropped a thing, that's a pet peeve of mine, with the lids closed on the garbage cans, or in the summertime, tipping the yard waste cans upside down, so they know if the street's been serviced. A driver knows what streets he goes on. If you go down a street, oh, the lid's closed, must've been serviced already, don't go down that street, they know what street they go down. That's a cop-out, that, that, see if they're serviced or not.
Sir, sir, the automated machine dumps the can and puts it back down. It's not touched by a man.
I'm not just saying, I don't care about the lid being closed, I'm saying that's a cop-out answer, to say that, oh, if the lids are closed, we don't know if it's been serviced or not. Or if the garbage, the compost can is not tipped upside down, where the excess compost gets dumped on the lawn, you don't know if that's been serviced or not.
I'm, I'm not trying to give you a cop-out answer. I'm, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is with the carts, with the cart trash and recycle these days, in, in the, in the old days, before the carts, if the trash was gone from the curb, it was gone. Now the cart is out there, once it's been serviced, if the lid is closed, you really don't know if it was drug out there late, or if it was ever emptied in the first place because of a blocked parked car.
If you're going down the street, you, you try it then.
Well, we do. But if it was brought out late, and Tony drives, if Tony drives by the, the collection truck, if he's 20 minutes behind the collection truck, goes up and down the street, Tony comes driving by, if there's a cart out there with a lid closed, which half may be, half may not be, he really doesn't know if there's trash in that cart.
I'll tell you what I do, I, you know, my trash gets picked up, my trash, first thing in the morning, set, right after, I'm on the first street.
Okay.
My recycle's later. So I'll go out there and close the trash can lid, because I'll pull both cans in when they're, because instead of making two trips, I'll do both of them. So I close my lid when it's emptied.
Yeah.
So the water doesn't get in.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just, I mean, I didn't understand why they tip the cans upside down, the, the grass, it's full of grass.
Tony, why don't you answer that? Why do they?
Well, originally, they do that, and the way they know is that.
Yeah, well.
If the ordinance changed and said, we want all our yard waste cans sitting straight up, we can start doing it.
Yeah.
Then it slugs water that way, too, though.
It doesn't matter, I mean, it's.
They have lids on them, either, and they're gonna be watering.
Yeah, well, most of them have holes in the bottom, but anyway.
And with the automated truck, one thing that people don't realize is automated, and with the hydraulic system, the driver don't have control of how, how fast that system works. Once he actuate that system, the can gonna come down, and that lid gonna come out.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about the lid, I'm just saying it was an excuse that was given. But I, I was contacted by several residents, I've got like seven things here, and one resident was complaining about the dirty trucks, how dirty they are all the time. Says, you don't wash them? How often do you wash the trucks? I mean, I've seen them, I've got pictures of them. They're terrible, they look, they look like they haven't been cleaned all year. You can't, some of you can't even make out the GFL on them.
Our, our trucks are washed weekly.
Okay, weekly?
The, 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 yes, they're, the landfill trucks are in the landfill. We, we operate out of a yard on Van Born, which is a, a road where there's two landfills, and anytime it's muddy or wet, as in the last couple of days, the road is muddy, my car, again, not a cop-out. My car's filthy every day because that landfill.
I understand that part of it. Now, what about cleaning the insides of the trucks?
Insides, the cab or the?
Where all the garbage is, are they cleaned regularly?
Yes, trucks are dumped at least once a day.
Dumped or cleaned?
Yes, some, twice a day.
Cleaned out with hoses?
Yes, they need to be cleaned out. Behind the blade, the hydraulic, there's, there's limit.
Where the trash is?
Yeah, where the trash is, yeah. I mean, the smell in the summertime gets, gets, you don't care about that?
I said we don't clean those.
Oh, you don't clean that? Okay, that's.
Rubber scuffing that does.
That was, that answered the question. Now, this is, these are from residents. Now, I want you guys to take a look at this picture here. This, this happened on my street today. I was walking my little two-year-old, and, and I come up to the corner, and I was watching the guy dump the trash, and then he dropped the can off right on this approach sidewalk, right over that little orange bumpy thing. He set it right in the sidewalk. Right, I mean, I was three houses away when he did it.
It's a handicap.
Right on the sidewalk.
Right on the sidewalk where you're going to the street.
That's right.
So that was, I can, you know.
What street was that?
That was on Netway Street, and this guy normally really good. I don't know if he had a different driver or not. But as, I was gonna tell you, that guy, he does do, he comes out of his truck, and that's one issue I had. A lot of people saying the cans aren't dropped off where they put them, and I, you said about the trees, that might be an issue there, but I know a lot of times, they're just put over, and a lot of times, when they're putting the cans back, I witnessed this also, where they start pushing the can forward after they drop it down. Instead of putting it down, out, and then dropping it, they drop it and push, and it digs the grass up. And I know you've had probably a lot of complaints about that. That's why they want them on, some people want them on.
Yeah, well, it shouldn't be an issue, though. It shouldn't be picked up and dropped off properly. And I know sometimes, you guys have a truck that goes around and just picks up the big stuff, and that leaves, it leaves these drivers that pick up the cans automated a lot more time. For guys coming down the street, and here he's, he's got to dump this, and then he's got to get out and put this in, you know? Don't you have a bulk truck that goes around and just picks up bulk stuff?
Yeah, yes.
Be more efficient that way.
Yes, as needed. The front-load trucks can pick up, say, like.
Small chairs.
Small chairs, they can collect that right, one, one-stop shop, which makes it easier, less traffic on the roads. But if it's a bigger item, yes, a bulk truck has to come for those large televisions.
Maybe some men to put it in.
Yeah, well, I understand that.
That's the one that you see with the big square in the front.
Yeah.
That's a Carrato truck, and that's a bulk truck.
That was my.
Do you do that for collection as well?
Yes.
That was, that was my, that was another thing. The Grotto truck is?
A Grotto.
Okay. Now, people are complaining about trash blowing, and most of the time, I think it's recyclable stuff. Now, this is something, I don't, I don't understand why you guys do this, is recyclables, and you know that's all, everything's loose in there, you put it in that thing in the front, and you fill that up, and then you go to dump it, and if it's blowing, all that stuff's free to blow all over the place. If anything should be dumped directly into the truck, it should be the recycling.
Okay, but sometime, we, we use a Carrato truck on recycle.
Yeah, you always do, a lot of time, yeah.
Because of the, the quantity of stuff we have out there, and the volume, and, and the recycle trucks is twice as slow as the, that Carrato truck, so.
So for efficiency.
So we have to, we have to switch those trucks over.
Okay. Now, do you normally have the same drivers do the same streets?
Normally, yes.
Okay, because I have a guy goes my street, is normally really good. He actually gets out, if he drops something, he goes on, I mean, small things, like cereal box or something, or something even smaller, he'll take off and whoop, and he'll stop, you know, look in his mirror, and you'll see it, and he'll get out. I mean, and the, the recycling.
That's me.
Okay, now, recycling is a big issue here in Dearborn Heights. People really take pride in recycling.
Yes.
There's a lady down the street from me the other day, last week, a week from today, last Tuesday, she come running down with a cardboard box, trying to catch the recycle guy, with a cardboard box, because she cares so much about recycling. And all the rumors are around here now that there's no recycling getting done.
That's not true. It's wholeheartedly not true, and I'm welcome, all of you to come see our plant, and I will personally give you a tour of it. It's on south, in, in New Boston, off South Haven Road, and I was part of the, I work for Great Lakes Recycling, I was part of that project where we, we built that plant, I know it like the back of my hand, and I will give you the tour, and you'll see. Fiber goes on one side of the plant, and all the other mixed recycling is, is conveyed in, and it goes to the left of the plant. Glass gets pulled out immediately on, on the conveyor. So these are some of the intricacies I can show you. And then I can show you the out, the outbound loads that go directly to the mills. Milk jugs go back into milk jugs. HDPE is, that's a HDPE natural, and HDPE color, and your heavy laundry, those go right back into the cycles they are. The water bottles, you can go see them.
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me just.
But the water bottles go back to the water bottles. So the thing is, we could not collect, we can't, it would be, we would be out of business. We have, how many communities, Sam, that we recycle for?
We've got 70 communities. I was at the, I was at the recycle center today, which we just bought in about a month and a half ago, from Republic Services.
But that's where the material went all, all the time. So we purchased, we're that pro-recycling, that we purchased this plant, and I don't know for how many millions of dollars, but when we built it, it was 11 and a half million dollars, that plant. So we're vested in recycling. I especially am, am the one who promotes recycling for our company. And I promise you, I'll take all of you, and any of, any, we can do a tour.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right?
No.
Okay.
Speaking of recycling, is textiles recyclable?
Yes, they are, but not with our company. It's through a company called, geez, I'll think of it when I'm leaving, but there is a company, and I can hook you up with.
So we don't put textiles in, in recycling?
No, absolutely not. It's not part of the.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna talk about recycling a little bit or something?
I'd love to.
Are you, okay. And what, now, compost. Now, our, our DPW department has these compost stickers that we can put on garbage cans, for your grass clippings and stuff like that. Now, a resident called me and said, to me, compost, I have a compost, and it's my old eggs, my, you know, stuff, is that compost that could be thrown out? It says compost.
Food, food waste, no.
So it shouldn't say compost, it should say just yard waste.
Yard waste.
Okay, compost is a misstatement, then.
In certain parts of the country, they use it, but here, no.
Okay, so it's not, okay.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the residents, if they've got any questions or concerns.
I'll talk to you about recycling, you know, my.
My name's Ed Frolik. I reside on Robindale Street. I gotta hand my, take my hat off to GFL, because with the recycling, with the thing picking up and that, that's a good thing, because when you had the garbage cans before, just like that, you had rats and everything else coming around, okay, because everything was in the open, okay? But my concern is this. On, on the Business Street of Warren Avenue, and I've been addressing this for all the time, and still nothing has been done on it. I don't do no emails and none of that stuff, okay? So, I've been addressing about all the garbage cans be emptied on Warren Avenue. They're all filled all the time, right to the top. When, when it's windy, the stuff starts blowing, then it blows on, around my house, and I'm picking it up, because I like to have my stuff cleaned around my house, okay? And, and that. And somebody was saying about the garbage cans, okay? And I watched, because I'm retired, so sometimes in the morning, I'll sit and I'll watch, okay? And that, okay, and I watched when the garbage is taken, I saw some garbage guys take the can, and, and what do you call them? Put it right on the street, and even though it was on the grass, set on the street. And if you go down Robindale, all the way near Ford Road, all the time, the garbage cans are right on the street, somewhere fall, fall down and everything else, okay? That needs to be addressed, because cars gonna be driving by, kids coming out of school, it's gonna hit one of them garbage cans, and somebody's gonna get killed or hurt, okay? And as far as the lids, what you were saying, lids have a tendency of opening up with the wind, okay? Because when they did the garbage can emptied by me, it, I didn't get to it right away, and it blew the cover up, okay? So, but I take my hat off to them for doing a good job, get the, take care of the garbage cans on, on the Business District, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other concerns, please come to the microphone, state your name, and limited to two minutes if you can.
Okay, my name's Diane Hydella, and I didn't have a problem with the other people that we had. And as far as the lids go, the wind does catch them, because it hit me in the face taking the garbage out one night. But my concern is, and they do put it in my driveway, which is so annoying when I come home, and.
What's your address or street?
Winston, Winston Lane, yeah, 83.
We're in the Coltsack area.
Okay, we'll make an end with that.
Yeah, okay. They always put it in the driveway, which drives me insane.
It shouldn't be.
No, I mean, I'm putting it where they want it.
No, it's not supposed to.
Uh, but they.
You can't get in your driveway then, some.
Yeah, no, I always have to get out.
That'll cause that.
Yeah, so that's annoying. But my concern is, and you were talking about recycling, and I did hear that since China does not accept our recyclables anymore, or most of them, that no one really recycles around here. There are no facilities that do recycling.
That's not true.
Okay, so I called your company, and I spoke with someone, and I said, okay, so this is what I've heard, and I'm a big recycler. I love to recycle everything, like your woman, you know, running after the truck with the box. But my question is, because I tried to recycle everything that I possibly could. So he told me, I, he told me that the facility was in Sterling Heights, and I said, what is the address? And he said, I cannot give that to you. I said, and why not? And he says, we can't have you go there. And I said, I don't want to go there, but can I drive by it? Give me the address. I can't do that. I said, okay, well, this is very hokey. Then I said, okay, so give me the phone number, so I can speak to someone at the facility. And he said, I can't do that either.
Well, then I'd like the name of that person, if you could find it, because he's not gonna be with our employment.
I honestly do, I did not write his name down.
It's wrong.
But I was furious. I was furious.
So what we do, we have.
So I would love your tour.
Logistically, we have plants, okay, where we take it on Eight Mile and Evergreen, okay? We take there. We take it your down river to the south of that facility. Have we been taking it down there? We have our own in Royal Oak. We have one in Romulus.
Do you have one in Sterling Heights?
No.
No, okay.
That's our, that's our.
That's a facility, but not.
Well, we have a transfer station in Warren. We bought, we leased the Warren Transfer Station from the City of Warren, so some material gets transferred and then brought to the recycling plant. So unfortunately, like everything in the world, some people don't know what they're talking about, and should just.
Absolutely.
Get the supervisor on the phone and say, this is an inquiry, and I don't know the answer. Don't guess and say something that's incorrect. So I apologize, and I will personally take you for a tour.
I would appreciate that.
And then you'll be very impressed.
Yes, and then from your facility, where does it go?
It goes to the end user. So the end user for corrugated could be multiple plants in the Midwest. Newspaper goes back to plants that produce newspaper again. So everything, Newspaper goes back to, uh, plants that produce newspaper again, so, everything, pet water bottles go to Dundee, Michigan, I know that for sure, and there's a plant called, uh, Fastipad, I mean, uh, Clean Tech is in, I've been there to see it, the process is amazing. So all those water, all your ones and twos are really getting recycled. I will speak about 3 through 7 plastics.
Okay.
Those were going to China, okay? And China had an issue, so they came, I just gave a talk this morning, for all the gross points about it. So, uh, bottom line is, we were, I'm, I'm sorry, DC.
You wanna?
The, the bottom line on 3 through 7 plastics were, we were selling it to China, and we were getting so much per pound, it got very contaminated with the larger carts. What happens is, people are meaning well, but they're throwing everything in that cart that's not recyclable, so it gets contaminated. So we started, and contamination would be food, liquid, your detergent gets in there, and it gets it all wet, the fiber and everything. So bottom line is, can't, China said we're done, you know, we can't separate it. The reason why they were taking it was, they were shipping all their goods to the United States, they were manufacturing practically everything we wear, anything we buy was made in China. So they didn't wanna come back with empty cargo containers, see? So they came up with this great idea in 2007, that we'll start bailing recycling, take, bail recycling, and take it back to China, we're gonna sort it, okay? So they, they did do that for a while, and there wasn't revenue for it, we would pay, they would pay us so much per ton. But bottom line is, it got so contaminated that they had to cut it off, and they recently did it in 2017, and it's not sort, uh, some kind of sort. In other words, they want 99.5% of the material to be clean, it's almost an impossibility. So that, not just us, the whole globe, uh, the United Kingdom, everyone was shipping to China, because that's where they were sorting this trash. And then, so it's not just our drama, it's all over the world, they're having this problem. So what happens now, is we're keeping it domestically, we're trying to, plants are trying to ramp up and get better systems to clean, to, to take this material and separate it better, and, you know, to do the right thing, and get it to the end users. It's all about putting it back into the cycle it was, and getting it to another, to make it into that product again. So, if, like, let's say, plastic bags, that's a great example, China was taking our plastic bags that you get from Krogers and CBS, boom, what happened? We, I, I did that plant in Boston, we had a vacuum system, that was the first thing those guys did on the line, there's a conveyor line, they'd grab those bags and stick them into a suction, like a vacuum, and it went in and got bailed. We were selling that to China for tw- a penny a pound, or $20 a ton, I shouldn't be divulging pricing, but I'm going to, yeah, but it was, and guess what? They said, "We have enough, we don't need them," and they, and their conversion process went dry. So guess what happens? We have nowhere, we have nobody in the United States who's, that was taking them on that quantity, 'cause we were producing so much. So that went bye-bye. So, there's the reason, it's not 'cause we don't wanna do it, it's because there's no end user to make it back into the, the product that it is. Corrugated goes back into corrugated, all your junk mail goes back into toilet tissue and towels, for sure. We ship it and bail it, and they cook it down, and they make it into the product again, they spray it, it's like, you know, a process, so.
But I just.
Okay, thank you very much.
They take all paper, right?
They do take all paper.
Like, I mean, cards and that, if it's got a little shine to it, or anything?
No, they take it off.
Thank you, we have another resident?
Sorry.
State your name, in two minutes.
Two questions, real quick. One is, uh, by the DPW, how are the statistics for, or do you maintain statistics, or do you maintain statistics for, uh, complaints like missed, uh, residents, those kind of complaints, if those are recorded, are they recorded if, for instance, I live on Greenley Park between Van Born and Hanover?
Okay.
And our block, many times, will get missed, because it's a short block, there's only houses on one side, is that recorded as one, or is that recorded as the role of the number of houses that are on it? That's the first thing. Um, and then, the second thing is, if you're throwing away these cans and bottles and things like that, they don't necessarily need to be washed, correct?
They should, uh, they should be rinsed.
Okay, that probably needs to be put out in the letter as well, so, those are the, the first question I also had, was for the DPW director.
The recording.
That's how the, how's it recorded, and if we keep, are, we're keeping track of those statistics, so that, I think, uh, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton asked about the, the, being charged for these complaints.
So currently, we are not doing any analytical studies on missed, uh, trash.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Come up to the microphone, you have two minutes.
Thank you.
Hi, um, I live in the sad community that has dumpsters, and, of course, there's no recycling, and I have one dumpster that's directly across the street from me, and when I come out on my porch, I can smell it all summer, um, and I can't even take the garbage out, I have to have somebody do it for me, 'cause it's very disturbing. But, um, aside from that is, there, um, like, most days, there, I don't even know if there's supposed to be a specific bulk pickup day, but, in our neighborhood, there are couches, mattresses, broken glass, baby toys, every single day, like, I walk a 15-pound dog, I have to pick him up over broken stuff, so he doesn't hurt himself, and there's garbage bags, half the time, they're torn open, we now have stray dogs that come in, there's strangers that come and dump out an entire truckload of stuff, I have all kinds of pictures, and it's, like, it's just horrible. I mean, I couldn't give my heart, if I wanted to right now, so.
May I ask your vicinity, or I don't even give you your addresses, but, so are we the hauler that picks up the, a front, the front load? It's, it's.
Well, yeah, no, it says the, those initials on the dumpster.
Yeah, so it's a commercial, how it's commercial.
It's like their GFL.
Yeah, it's a commercial.
Is it yours, or it just says GFL?
Yeah, it's ours, but we're residential, but still, if it's, it gets dumped, or it's not been dumped, you're saying?
No, it does, but this is, they, that stuff stays there. Is this not your company, it's just they have the same name?
It is our company, but it's a different division, but however, I know and understand it, and I can tell you that. Uh, maybe we need to increase the frequency.
They, I think they come twice a week, I don't know, I'm not sure.
So, so maybe we need to come three times a week. Secondly, bulk items that are being dropped off is very common by, by people that don't live in your community, and they're, they're, they just do it because they don't know where else to put it, so they bring it to you. That, however, you should, um, I'll give you my card, and I would like you to, um, I'll help you with setting up the, that, you know, you have to have better communication with your sales rep who handles your account, and others, right?
Right, right.
So that, we need to get into bulk, and we gotta start finding people and watching them, I mean, you know, that's what they have to do, your, whoever manages your community.
I, I suggested that, I mean, I, I suggest they find our association.
We have, we have ways, we have lock, lock bars too, so people can't just come and fill up your dumpster.
So we don't, we don't think this is a residential, we think it's like an apartment or something?
No, these are condominiums that we live in, that's what I'm talking about, this is a condominium, yeah.
Oh, they're just dumping stuff.
That we live in and own. No, but these are people who live there, who are dumping these things. I mean, I don't see them, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, at this time, is there any other comment or concerns?
Council chair?
Okay, this concludes.
I have a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I would like a, a number, we were sitting here talking about this stuff, and people are here, watching, and at home watching, can we have a number that they can call if they have an issue? Give us, give us a telephone number, wait, wait a minute, I went from, the, are we gonna get a number for Dearborn Heights DPW, or GFL?
To expedite the process, the best number to call is 313-791-6000. Our secretary's there, will directly email GFL, and it goes directly to their field staff. And this, this has been working very well, in my opinion, it's typically resolved by the end of the day, if not, early in the next morning.
So they email GFL immediately after getting a complaint?
Correct. And if it's something that's a, a bigger problem, they'll reach out to Tony directly.
Okay, well, I hope all the concerns are, you guys have most good memories, 'cause no one's writing anything down.
You're wrong.
Oh, okay, all right, good, okay, okay, so let's, let's, let's not just listen, let's, let's work on this and solve these problems, okay?
Mary, is, Mary, um, Mary, just the, the lack of recycling in Dearborn Heights, the rumor of the lack of recycling in Dearborn Heights, has been going around for a while. You mentioned you have the facility, and that's great, and I, I have no reason not to believe you, but I think for some of the residents that have that concern, is there any way that you could take some sort of a video, maybe send, put it on the website, put it on Facebook, put it, send it to all the council people, something, just to show people that there is an actual facility, and the stuff is recycled?
You know what?
Thank you.
It might be, it might be a recycling informational video that also, and result shows where it goes, once you do put it in the can, it's taken, now, this, this is how it's all separated.
Exactly.